All those in favor?
Aye.
May's, abstentions, carries. Item number 1B1, Queen's College.
Okay. Three MS programs in risk management, risk management and accounting, risk management, finance, risk management, dynamic financial analysis modeling. These graduate programs prepare students for employment with firms actively engaged in risk markets such as insurers and investment banks as well as consulting and auditing firms. The recent financial crisis brought to light the need for a broader-based comprehensive approach to understanding and managing risks, which is the underpinning of the proposed curriculum. Strong letters of support have been received from both the industry and from the academic evaluators. The programs have separate admissions requirements and will be registered separately but are presented in a single document because a substantial portion of the curriculum is shared and the faculty and budget resources overlap.
Long overdue programs, I guess.
And something new for CUNY, apparently? This is really a new direction.
Valley needed.
Yeah. Very timely.
All in favor? Given our position inside the world's financial center, everything we do to strengthen Baruch College and offerings like this is important.
Any other comments?
Queen's College. Sorry, Baruch is next. My apologies. Can I correct that statement? Not that there's anything wrong with it. Yes, yes. I thought we were on the next one.
You're ahead of us.
I'm ahead of you.
That sounds like something that Baruch would want to offer.
Yes, they would want to offer too. That's not necessarily right.
Can we make it a compulsory course that all Wall Streeters must attend?
May I have a motion to move this item?
So move.
All those in favor? Please say aye. May's, abstentions, carries. Next item, item 1B2, Baruch College.
Okay, this is a BA in Biological Sciences. The proposed program will serve students with career objectives in the healthcare field or in biological sciences. It builds on the existing strengths of Baruch's Department of Natural Sciences. A number of Baruch faculty members teach in CUNY doctoral programs and several students participating in research under the advisement of the faculty have won prestigious scholarships in recent years. All required courses and most of the electives are already offered at the college. Strong letters of support from graduate and professional schools are enclosed. And I'd just like to add one additional comment, which is that this program is something that Baruch has wanted for a very long time and has deserved for a very long time. And it just gives me great joy to bring this forward today.
Comments?
I can't imagine a good undergraduate college like Baruch without a strong program in biological sciences. They've had the faculty -- this is Baruch, thank you. They've had the faculty, and this is well deserved. All in favor?
If they wanted this for a long time, why didn't we do it earlier and why are we
doing it now? Is there something that I don't know about? Was there a financial issue or we just didn't get around to it?
I think that sometimes in the past, there -- I'm going back now 10 years or so. There were, I guess, some people had some ideas that Baruch should primarily have business majors and not biology majors. So the truth was that Baruch had an ad hoc major at that time where students who were interested in biology would go and major even though they didn't have the actual biology major. And we're being placed into wonderful health professions graduate schools as a result. And that has gone on and Baruch has continued to do research with students and just has, over the years, proven, and I would say the administration now recognizes the value of that major at Baruch.
Officer Beke? I see that according to the proposal, they are articulated with Ostos. Is there -- are there explorations or will there be to be articulated with other community colleges as well? Do you know?
Yes.
Yes.
The answer is definitely yes.
Definitely. Definitely.
Just a comment. This comes out of an era when other colleges didn't have departments that were, one would consider essential. I can think of a college that didn't have a department of English, for instance, that has been -- was rectified not too long ago. You'd think a baccalaureate college would always have that. But it hasn't been the case and now we're fixing it. And I think these are all good things.
Sounds like better late than never. Motion to move this item?
So move.
Okay. All those in favor? Please say aye. May's, abstentions, carries. Item 1B3, Royal Manhattan College, AS in Biotechnology.
Okay. This proposed program combines the first two years of a liberal arts and sciences curriculum with an introduction to biotechnology research. Graduates will be prepared to transfer to baccalaureate programs in biology or biotechnology, thus continuing their preparation for employment in biological, medical, or agricultural laboratories as well as for graduate studies or professional studies. Biotechnology is attractive to students because it is a rapidly growing innovative field. An opportunity to assist in research early on will be used as an effective tool to motivate and retain students. A similar program at Kingsborough was approved by the board last June.
Discussions?
One should add that this articulates with a degree in biotechnology at York College, so it doesn't stand out so much.
Officer Beke?
And that it, as the proposal states, it's always good to see community colleges developing programs in the STEM fields, obviously. Much sought after, I can imagine the applications with the large quantity.
Will the students have a chance to articulate at City College, for example, or Hunter, where they have very strong programs? Or is all of the movement into the baccalaureate colleges intended to be focused on York?
No, this particular -- Do you want to come to the table?
This particular program was arranged or articulated with -- This particular program was articulated with York. But BMCC has a very strong articulation with City College in many areas, the strongest being engineering science. So we don't leave out any schools. If our students wanted to articulate and go to City College in science, I'm sure the provost there would agree with me that they would be able to go. But this is a direct articulation that was done between the two schools, the two colleges.
Good. Fine.
No other question? Motion to move?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor? Please say aye. May's, abstentions, carries. Last item, 1B4, City College, abolishment of Department of Behavioral Medicine.
Yes, this is a department in the Sophie Davis School of Biomedical Education. City College proposes to abolish the Department of Behavioral Medicine within the Sophie Davis School of Medicine. The existing department, which has not demonstrated the significant growth that was anticipated, is no longer viable in accordance with the board policy, which requires five full-time faculty members to constitute a department. The Executive Faculty Committee of the Sophie Davis School of Medicine voted on November 23rd last fall in favor of abolishing the department. There are just two faculty who are in this department and they will be transferred within the Sophie Davis School of Medicine, one to the Department of Physiology and Pharmacology and one to the Department of Community Health and Social Medicine. Both faculty members have agreed to this plan.
Officer Phillips?
The UFS has also confirmed that both departments have agreed to receive those two faculty members. It has to be a mutually acceptable arrangement, and that is the case.
Okay. Good to know. Any other comments? If not, I'll move the item.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
May's, abstentions, carries.
Can somebody look up the OED and see if abolishment is a word?
Abolition.
Abolition, which is, I think, one, certainly normally one would use abolition here. I'm not -- if you can find abolishment somewhere, okay, but...
Depends on whatever you're talking about.
It is actually there. This came up last spring too. We had the same -- and I looked it up. It's not the preferred, but it's in my American heritage, I think.
We learn something new each day.
Yes.
Do you have a little bit of report?
Yes, I have a brief report. I did write to CAPR members just a little over a month ago and I just want to update you on a couple of things. Basically, mostly on enrollment, where we stand. As of the end of the first day of spring classes, which was towards the end of last week, registrations, and by this I mean headcount enrollment, not FTEs, were 11% more than the previous spring, which is huge. In addition, as of a couple of days ago, freshman fall applications compared to the same day last year were running 16% ahead and transfer applications 129% ahead. Now, as you know, this is adding to huge growth that we already had in the past year. And also, spring enrollment is usually lower than fall enrollment. That's usually what happens. It's not clear that's going to happen this fall compared to last fall. The other thing is that spring enrollment is usually the best predictor of fall enrollment. As we say, spring is the springboard for the fall. With the numbers that we're seeing, we believe that it's going to be very difficult for campuses to hold to reasonable growth this fall. Each campus's situation is a little bit different. And so we're working individually with the campuses on maintaining their fall enrollment growth to a reasonable level. As you know, as I've said many, many times, what is more important than anything else is our maintaining and increasing the quality of the education that we provide. And it's very, very difficult in a situation where growth is so extreme as it is right now. We are, therefore, looking at categories of students that might be of lower priority in order to, or I should say applicants, in order to save seats for students of higher priority. For example, I want to give you an example so that you don't imagine all kinds of dire things. But we are, we will be giving, for the fall admission, we will be giving priority to students who are transferring within CUNY over students who are transferring into CUNY from outside. So that's the kind of thing that we're looking at, to try to help the campuses with controlling enrollment. Now also, when I wrote to you at the end of December, I told you that we were engaging in a variety of strategies to try to accommodate more students within our limited space while still maintaining or increasing the quality of instruction. And we are continuing with those efforts. For example, we recently issued a request for proposals from the campuses to increase the number of hybrid courses on the campuses. Hybrid courses are courses that combine traditional face-to-face instruction with online instruction. And they have been shown in recent research to be pedagogically superior on average -- there are obviously all kinds of variation in here, but on average to either 100% face-to-face or 100% online. And I'm happy to say that almost every campus has submitted a proposal to us for significantly increasing their hybrid courses. And we're expecting to fund many of their projects, which will help us to make better use of tight space while also simultaneously, hopefully, increasing student learning. We're going to continue to look for every possible way, this is just one example, of how to maintain and increase educational quality during these very challenging enrollment times.
I'm not quite sure how hybrid saves space because you have to have space for, you know, not 15 times or 10 or 7, so...
What we do is, or we're encouraging the campuses to do and was part of the RFP that we issued, is that a campus can say it's a Tuesday, Thursday class ordinarily. If you have, we run multiple sections of the same course. Two sections, one could meet on Tuesdays face-to-face, the other one Thursdays face-to-face, and online the other.
If you split it in half.
Yeah, right.
You do half, actually.
Right, right. So you have to do some clever scheduling. And, but if you do that, if you pay attention to that, and that was part of our RFP, then you can fit twice as much in.
And I'm wondering, could you send us electronically the research that shows that it could be superior?
Yes, I'd be happy to do so.
CAPR board members?
Yes, this is a meta-analysis that was done of a great many studies and I'd be very happy to send it to you.
Officer Beke?
Have you gotten any feedback that indicates that campuses might feel that what's actually happening here with these numbers is that students are applying sooner because they know what's happening?
Well, we were hoping, we keep hoping, that it's sooner. But that was what was happening with the spring registrations. We were seeing these very big numbers and so we kept thinking, well, they're registering earlier. But when you get to the first day of classes and you're still seeing it, it's hard to say they're registering earlier anymore. We do know that a lot of what we're seeing in the numbers is not necessarily more people, but more, it's more people, it's not more new people, it's more retained people. Less people are leaving CUNY. We have more coming, but even more are staying who would ordinarily have transferred out or stopped out or whatever. So we're showing much more retention. And the numbers I gave you are all headcount numbers. You know, what we've also seen the past year or two is that the FTE numbers are even bigger than, and growing bigger, growing more than the FTEs. We have yet to see that. We don't have those data yet, but, because students are also taking more credits.
In the applications, might they be applying to more colleges?
Yes.
One person applying to...
But that's what we hoped for last fall and we still got lots more new students.
President Perez?
We're also finding that there's a backlog of students that want to be readmitted, I'm sorry, who want to be readmitted for the fall and were too late because many of our colleges closed early. So this is a backlog of students who were planning coming in the fall that are now filing in the spring. And we'll find the same thing will happen next semester with those individuals winding in the spring. So what we're doing is really building up a block of students who are now coming earlier because they were left out last time.
You know, I'm worrying that with the question of space, how that will impact on the Hispanic student that come from the high school. I mean, how do you see that situation there?
So far, we're doing, we've been managing the space situation okay. But since this growth is continuing, that's why we want to emphasize, one of the reasons, we want to emphasize the hybrid, to make sure that we stay okay. And we do have, Ostos is doing okay in terms of space, so that's good. Some of our other campuses are more crowded.
What about Tony campus?
Tony's camp...
We already know the answer.
But he finds ways to fit them in.
Well, the thing is that, I think, one of the things that we have found that works to our benefit is that we're open seven days a week, so we maximize our space. So on a Saturday or Sunday, you can go into the college as if it was a Friday or Thursday. So we find that that's been, and especially now we're offering daycare on the weekends as well. So now we find that mothers are finding it more easier to also take those classes.
And the other community colleges do the same thing, open seven days?
Yeah, we are...
That might be encouraged because many...
We are encouraging the campuses and more and more, they are using nights, weekends, all the, what we call all of the scheduling grid.
And it's not just us. If you just walk around town and go to all the academy schools, 10 o'clock at night, there are people taking classes. It's everywhere.
Yeah, and what we're also doing is, we're encouraging campuses that have a lot of adult and continuing education on the campus to do that off-campus, say in a high school that's nearby in the evening, so that we have more space on campus for the students who are in credit-bearing programs.
You know, we have one only problem now that we are seeing in the unit on the high that started with small amount of children, now we don't have space for them and now we haven't done anything about that. I talked to Math, the chancellor, and the community is very upset about not having and other places where they can go and increase the capacity of the, you know, the high. Nothing's been done about that and now there's no place to do anything. This is a serious situation for our community.
We'll look into that.
Well, Flushing has the same issue with the extension school there too, I'm sure.
I have a question. I keep hearing that enrollment is going up. What about the rate that faculty is increasing? Is it keeping in with enrollment or...
That's, this is a very important point. The campuses have been trying very hard to hire as many faculty as they can, full-time faculty. And it's, it's, this is why growing this fast is so difficult. Even if you have all the money in the world, to hire that many people that quickly, it just puts incredible stress onto a department, which is really the primary unit that focuses on the hiring. From what we, we're still sifting through the data for last, from last fall. From what we can tell, the faculty have not, have grown enormously, but maybe not quite as much as the enrollment, which is another reason why we keep trying to work with the campuses to find good ways to hold the enrollment to a reasonable growth.
The full-time faculty's growth is in the high twenties over about a decade and the degree student growth is about 35% now. But the numbers you're talking about for next year could kick that up above 40% easily. So I believe, so the answer is not quite.
Absolute numbers, yes. Percentage, it's hard to grow because of the rate of the growth.
This is another issue that we have in terms of the faculty. I mean, I think that the Hispanic faculty in the whole university is almost zero. It's a very small one and I hope that next time that we had an opportunity to increase, that should be, make a great effort to see if we can increase the number of Hispanic professors. I don't think we have any practically.
I don't think that's right, but I don't have the numbers in my head.
It's not, it's not zero at all.
Well, I don't mean zero, but I mean maybe, maybe oh, point, point, one, 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 one percent.
It's not that low, but it's not high enough.
Officer Beke?
That's a good answer.
And I believe that actually, in spite of all the hiring of new full-time faculty, the ratio hasn't changed that much between full-time and adjunct. I don't know, is that, is that correct?
Well, we are having more, slightly higher percentage of instruction is by part-time as the students increase faster than the faculty do.
See, no university in the country has increased the size of its full-time faculty as much as this one has without adding any new campuses. None. So that's our growth record on full-time faculty. By the way, that's without additional appropriations too. But the student growth is so tremendous that it outweighs even what is a remarkable institutional success in adding all these full-time faculty. And it's, you're just choking on our own success in a sense. And there are other things that are driving the enrollment, but, but it's a very serious situation because the political process is completely indifferent to this in the way appropriations flow through to the universities. It's not like the public schools where anything relates to enrollment. So it's a very serious situation.
I should say that I think what the departments have been doing and the campuses have been doing in terms of adding faculty is really nothing short of heroic because of the amount of work that is involved in hiring good new full-time faculty. It's really quite amazing. And everything that they've done to accommodate all these students is really remarkable. Everybody's trying very hard.
The quality is very high.
I think the, not only is it heroic in terms of how the university is hiring full-time faculty because we are in a wave of hiring right now, but it's also remarkable that we've been able to hire the part-timers in the numbers that we need and in the increasing numbers that we need. One concern I have is that the overall full-time, part-time ratio, while it's getting a little worse, is, there may be problems in individual departments that have sharply different ratios. And I'm not sure whether the university's done a study to see how many departments have a much higher ratio of part-timers to full-timers than the norm. And of course, there may be departments that have a better ratio in terms of more full-timers and that's not a cause of concern, but it might be a cause of concern if there are individual departments in the university that have much worse ratios. It might be worth looking at to see if those departments can be helped. Not all departments have the same ratios.
I am aware of that.
Yep.
Right. Do our colleges have an absolute number of students that they can't accept beyond that number or we just keep on taking in?
Our, our position is that we have no absolute limit.
There is none.
Our limit is our quality, that we don't want to grow faster or more than our quality.
Most private colleges have a limit and they manage that limit every year. And they don't go beyond it. But some public campuses have had a commitment to take all qualified students who show up and that's historically been CUNY's commitment. It was historically the Cal State commitment too, until about a year ago when Cal State said enough, we can't take anymore. But we're going to be, I don't know how much longer CUNY can maintain that commitment, frankly.
And as President Perez mentioned, all the community colleges, I believe, last summer, at some time during the summer, closed off admissions.
Yes, and it's probably going to be earlier this summer.
Yeah.
Which is a way of limiting.
Yes. And for the first time, I could also mention, for the first time, we actually have a date on our website, which has passed. It was February 1st. In the admissions part of the website, which said, "You need to get all your materials in by February 1st for all the colleges and after February 1st, applications will only be processed on a space-available basis." We've never done that before, at least for all the colleges. Some colleges have always had much earlier deadlines.
Okay. No other issue? Motion to adjourn?
Turned.
Thank you, everyone.
I know, I know. I know.
Unbelievable.
I keep, I keep telling admissions people, you know, these are jaw-dropping notes.
I compare, we exceeded the one intuition we totally freaked.
Yeah. Yes, I'll work in a way.
Mike's...
I was at Columbia. I'm fine. He was actually, he was a PhD. I have to head back down to China. I'm on the beach.
The Times made, it was Sunday, last Sunday or Tuesday.
No, let me...
I guess it's a problem.
I was at Columbia, I'm fine, I'm very well, he was actually, PhD.